This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council meeting of October 17th, 2022. Call the order, please.
Mayor Proton Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember Noah?
Here.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Here.
And Mayor Walagura?
Here. Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America as you are in power from which it stands, when our nation under God is indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagura?
Aye. Thank you. Any proposed modifications to the agenda? Okay, approval of the minutes, regular session of October 3rd, 2022, and special sessions of October 6th and 11th, 2022. Any issues?
No issues. No issues.
Citizens appearing before council on agenda, non-agenda items are allowed five minutes max to address your concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address council this evening. If you'd like to do so and you're live, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our clerk's records and begin.
I am Mark Hunter and I am alive. 614 South Eighth Avenue. On the DDA, I really would not like to see them take over the rest of River Street. That only affects three private businesses. And I do very much enjoy using my cousin's auto shop, JNS Auto. I could see in the future the DDA would want to take those properties, which by putting it in the DDA, they can then use the same right that the city council has in being able to take property for public purposes. One thing people don't, most, almost no one who votes for millages understands is that the DDA takes a small portion of every county millage. Be it for recreation, or the library, or the college, or whatever. I always thought that should be on the ballot, how much is the DDA going to get from this millage you're approving. With as tight as money is lately, that does have an impact on some of those entities, including the county government, which is with, if they didn't have that COVID money, they'd be in terrible trouble. And when that money runs out, the county's going to be distressed. Another item is, I see the public accuracy test for voting equipment is going to be on October the 26th. And I'd like to see the people who are talking about voter integrity show up for some of these so that they can see the work that's done to make the votes voting accurate and correct and safe. Because I'm certain, you know, Anna would answer their questions and they could watch, she's shaking her head, yes, she'll answer their questions. And so instead of showing up on election day or the day after and saying the election was rigged, you know, if they're really interested, the 26th at 5:00 PM at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Where are you about?
Hi, my name's Robert Bruning and I'm here as a concerned citizen about Metzcafe. They recently just painted a huge pot plant sign on the side of the building facing our homes and Campbell Street. And that would be considered signage. And I think that's a direct F you to our residents in our neighborhood because we opposed it so much. But I always thought that you guys had to have a certain size for your, excuse me, for the signage that you guys had were allowed. And this thing is as big as a billboard there. Now, I can't see it being as art or a mural. Everybody knows what a pot plant looks like. And that signifies what that store is. So that can be the only thing but a sign for that store. So I'd like to have something done with that, either erase it or ask them to put a smaller banner up, something along those lines, because it's just, it's an ugly atrocity on the building there. And it affects everybody in there. Because every time I look at it, I just, my stomach curls. I mean, it's bad enough having a pot shop there, but it's really bad seeing a huge 20-foot tall pot plant looking out our street and I can look out my yard and see it. So I'd like to have that addressed if possible.
And Mr. Bruning, we are, I don't normally address, but there was some email traffic earlier today and staff is already kind of looking into, doing some research and data collecting on just what governs that. So we are looking into it.
I also, because like I said, if it's not in ordinance, I'd like to see that modified to take care of that because that should not be allowed that big. I mean, like I said, it's as big as a billboard there. And I know my neighbor across the street addressed it with me and, I mean, it's right on their back of the house. They open up their back door and it's right there in their face. I go in my front yard, I can look there and I could see a big corner of the building there, see, and I go on the corner, on the corner, and that's right there for everybody to see. It's just, not to mention the fact, kids, every time they go by that, they're going to look at that and say, well, what is that? And then I got to explain to my kid or the other kids, wherever it may be, what that is and what it's for and what kind of store it is. We shouldn't have to be doing that. They shouldn't be promoting that to the kids. You know, we're adults, we want to know what that is. We can go into that store if we decide to. I decided not to, but those kids, they don't know what the stuff is and harm is to it. So I'd like to have that addressed if possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else live in the room? And I don't, that's why you said that. I'm sorry, I didn't, Mark, I didn't realize why you said that, but because we take virtual as well, so. Anyone in the virtual world that's also alive? Okay, thank you. All right, no public hearing this evening, so next up is our consent agenda. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $412,140.44. B is a council appointment of Elizabeth Heath to the Recreation Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring on November 1st, 2025. C is a mayoral reappointment of Randy Bobolts to the Planning Commission for a three-year term expiring on November 1st, 2025. And D is the approval of Resolution 2022-15 for the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Development Project for Construction of Restroom Facilities at Bayview Park. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
Mayor Walagura?
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Cue. Announcements this evening. First up, Halloween trick-or-treat hours in the city of Alpena will be 5:30 to 7:30 PM on Monday, October 31st, 2022. B is absentee ballots are available in the clerk's office for the November 8th, 2022 general election and residents may also register to vote. And last is the public accuracy test of the voting equipment will be performed on October 26th, 2022 at 5:00 PM in the City Hall lobby. And public is welcome. Anything to add to that, staff? I'm pretty covered.
All of those, like Mark said, that are questioning the integrity of the election to come to that.
Sure.
Are they going to show how the machines work and things like that?
Yeah. So we would run a test deck for, I would just select one precinct. And we have like 50 ballots that would need to be run through. And then we have a chart of predetermined test results that, once those all have been run through, run the report and then just check off, make sure that it caught the errors that were pre-programmed from the vendor and then also tabulating the results accurately.
Report of officers. First is the second reading of ordinance 22-480, which amends the city of Alpena zoning map. Bill Piper?
Consistent with council policy, this would not be read again unless one of the individual members wishes it to be read. This is for the property of 216 South Eighth Street that will be allowed to be used as a duplex. There are parking spaces, the planning commission did give the property owner a certain amount of time to get those paved, so it doesn't have to be immediately. So we just need to vote yes or no, if there's any questions, either myself or you could answer them.
Any questions from council?
No.
No. Not at all.
So I move we adopt ordinance 22-480. Second.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
Mayor Walagura?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is the first reading of ordinance 22-481, which amends the city of Alpena zoning map. Bill?
This is an amendment to the city of Alpena zoning map. The city of Alpena zoning ordinance, city of Alpena zoning ordinance zoning map, as hereby amended as follows. Parcel located at 1223 South State Avenue shall be conditionally rezoned from CCB to B2 to allow for drive-through food service. There will be a statement of conditions as follows. The property owner is looking to restate to drive-through at what was formerly known as Lutz Restaurant. This has been a functioning use for over 40 years at this location. There's adequate stacking, maneuverability, and street access. And there'll also be directional signage to help guide vehicles in the proper lanes and direction. Section 2 is a separability clause. Section 3 is a saving clause. Section 4 is the effective date and provides that the ordinance changes shall take effect upon the expiration of seven days after the publication of the notice of adoption. And once again, either myself or Montiel could answer any questions. Council may recall, this was in front of the joint meeting that we had last week with the planning commission, so, you know, it was presented then as well.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Anybody have anything from Bill or the planning commission now rather than that second reading?
No question.
All right, that'll come back at our next meeting. Next is costs and voter turnout of the August 2nd, 2022 election. Anna?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. The cost for the August 2nd state primary election totaled $16,161. The largest expense was the election worker payroll at $5,948. The city had 8,620 registered voters at the time of the election. The voter turnout was 25%, which equals 2,173 voters. Of that total, 997 voters were absentee and 1,176 were in person. The largest voter demographic at 848, or 39% of the total, was, to no surprise, comprised of females age 60 and older. Precinct 5, located at the First United Methodist Church, had the highest turnout among the precincts with 459 of total voters, while Precinct 6, located at St. Anne's Parish Center, had the lowest turnout at 401. The next election is the general election on Tuesday, November 8th. Polls are open at 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. And then I prepared some graphs, some visuals. Charlie, if you could go a couple more to the colored ones? There we go. Can you zoom out? Okay. A little bit hard to see. So this first one is voter turnout by gender. The males are in blue and females are pink. On the right side of this slide, we have total registered voters for males and females. Males were at 4,036, females at 4,582. And then on the left side are how many voted? For males, 937, and women, 1,236. We do have one person who has no gender, but that person did not vote in that election. I don't know if that was just a mistake or they can vote that way. The next slide is voter turnout by age group. The green, so over on the right side again are the total registered voters by age group. The green one, 3,345 are those age 60-plus. And then over on the left side are those that voted in the August 2nd election. And the highest turnout was age 60-plus with 1,462 voters. Next slide, please. This one is absentee versus in-person by gender. On the left side, we have absentee voters, 378 males, 619 females. And on the right side is in-person, 559 males and 617 females. So we had two more in-person male voters, or I'm sorry, absentee than in-person. Next slide, please. This one shows absentee versus in-person by age group. So the green is absentee and the yellow green is in-person. And all the way to the right, that is again the 60-plus age group. Interestingly, the only age group that had more absentee voters was the group age 60-plus. There was 828 absentee voters and 634 in-person voters. Any questions on the election? Okay. I think we do a receive and file.
I move we receive and file.
Second.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
Mayor Walagura? Mayor Proton Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is the financial report for the first quarter of fiscal year 2023.
Okay. So this is, as the mayor said, for the first quarter of fiscal year 23, we should be at 25% of the budget. So this is measured at September 30th, 2022. In the green section, we have the revenue. And the original budget that was passed had $11.3 million in revenue. We have since amended that to $11.4 million. So far, year-to-date, we've taken in 4.7 million, which equals 41.63% of the budget. We are 160,000 more than what we took in at this point last year. Over on the right side, the explanation of variance. As always, the general government budget received is always high at this point because of the summer tax collection. Public safety has only taken in 9.74% of budget and that is because of the ambulance transport fees that are negative due to the annual reversing entry. It's the same kind of stuff I say every year. Sound like a broken record. Other contributors to that include lack of liquor license revenue and state fire protection grant funds not received yet, also have not received grant money for turnout gear. So those are just some of the bigger things that I noticed. Public works is right above the 25%. Community and economic development is at 26%. That looks good. Recreation and culture is at .61%. The majority of the revenue, so we are expecting to take in 427,000. 419,000 of that is for grants, none of which has been received yet. So that's why it's so low. Transfers in is only at 1.92% and that's because the bulk of that is for ARPA projects. And as those get expended, then we move the funds over from the ARPA fund. Any questions on revenue? Okay. Moving down to the blue section, expenditures. Original budget was for $11.9 million and we have since amended that to over $12 million. Year-to-date, we are at 2.5 million, which equals 20.91% of the budget used. As compared to last year, we're about 120,000 over at this point. But we're still under the 25%. General government is at 15% and that's low because of the annual contribution that we make in December for the pension that hasn't been done yet. Public works is low at 18% for capital projects that haven't been expended. Community and economic development's a little bit over the 25% and that's due to the semi-annual payment to Target Alpena. Rec and culture is at 14%. Of the 916,000 that's budgeted for capital and parks, only 19,500 has been expensed. So a lot of projects yet to happen. Transfers out, we are over budget at 33% and that's elevated due to the annual payment for the DPW building. So with the original passage of the budget, we were going to be $608,362 over expenditures over revenue. We have since amended that to $605,438, so it got just a smidge better. Looks like, what is that? So far, oh, so far revenue is 2.2 million over expenditures. And last year at that point, it was 2.2, so pretty close. Any questions on the expenses? Okay. Cash balances and investments. For the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, that balance went down by 10,000, but this was something that I had mentioned in the budget presentation that we were going to do. We were going to take 10,000 because we had not done that in a few years and that was kind of building, so it's for admin expenses, we transferred that. The Downtown Development Authority, those two funds are combined, so now we have $0 in the number five account. It just has been moved to the other one. Down at the bottom for retirement, we are at $24.2 million versus $24.9 million a year ago. These amounts are book values. For comparison, the book value at 63022 was 24.8 million, so we dropped .6. While the market value decreased from 26.9 million on June 30 to 24.7 million. So in three months, we lost 2.2 million. For the retiree healthcare, we are at 2.1 million versus 1.9 a year ago. The book value at June 30 was 1.9 million. The market value increased from 1.88 million on June 30 to 2 million on September 30th. And that was because we made our annual contribution, which was $314,364. We made that in July. Any questions on this? And our last slide is the list of investments by fund. So just looking at the total on the bottom, which you can't quite see. Can you make it go up a little bit, Charlie? Thank you. So the book value at 3.88 million is still the same as it was last quarter. Now we are at, the market value is at 3.68 million and I looked at what it was at June 30th and we lost a 2,000 in market value.
You should start with that, so.
You can only get up.
Thank you, Anna. I appreciate your hard work on that and your crew. Anybody, any questions?
I move we receive and file.
Mayor Walagura? Mayor Proton Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
Carried.
Down to new business, first is the Michigan Boating Pump Out Program Grant for the Alpena Marina and Harbor Master Shannon Smolinski is here.
In September, the DNR in cooperation with Sea Grants Michigan and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service released a call for applications for Marina sewage disposal facility improvements. What this grant does is provides pump-out and sewage collection boatside for boaters that come in and out of the marina and the ones that are there permanently. Currently, we do offer those services here at the marina. However, our existing pump-out is older, so we're starting to get to the point where we can no longer get parts for it. And we actually have to do some repairs and maintenance on it this year if we're going to run it next year. Knock on wood, it's working, but it hasn't, you know, it's one bad day away from not. So we'd like to pursue a grant with Sea Grants to replace the pump-out system with a newer system. It's a little bit faster, a little bit nicer, do some improvements as far as just us being able to use that usability on the part of our boaters and our staff. The project's going to cost $15,600 roughly. I've priced a couple pump-outs and would like to go with this one here. They will pay for 75% of that project, leaving us with a balance that we would have to pay is $3,900. The only problem was, is that this grant is not always available. It's only offered sporadically, so when we were going into budget, it hadn't been offered for two years. And now it's open, so I'd like to jump and take advantage of that. However, I don't know if I have enough money in the marina fund right now in order to pull it off, so I am respectfully also asking for you guys to help me make the match out of the general fund if I cannot find enough money in project leftovers as we go through all year.
I wouldn't worry about us, it's her.
Yeah, I'm coming begging to you first because if you say yes, then I'll work Anna over.
The order of this meeting is just conducive.
So right now, my recommendation is that council allow staff to prepare and submit the grant application to the Michigan Boater Pump Out Program Grant for the Alpena Marina pump-out replacement. And if necessary, authorize additional fund transfers to cover the match for the project.
I can have a question if I may. So we're a clean marina?
Yes.
Designated as a clean marina, does this help us keep that designation or is, are we eligible for the funds because of that?
We're actually eligible for the funds as part of that. That program is actually what kind of drives these pump-out grants. So us being designated that, it opens up that eligibility for us to be able to pursue these grants. Doesn't mean that you won't get it, but I think being designated a clean marina and wanting to keep our designation by making certain we have these services available to the boaters, it's one of those things that, that's probably one of the largest complaints. They're so excited when they get to Alpena, our pump-out works, because they've been to four other marinas and they're not working. So keeping that is one of the ways that we keep boaters coming in.
Yeah, is that, you know, a couple of questions on that and, you know, is that something that's highly used? I'm assuming, hearing that, I'm assuming it is where you're doing 100 or more.
We're doing about 100 a year right now just because of the transient traffic. Every transient boater that comes in, they're stopped, if they are, they're stopping at the dock and they're pumping out and they're getting fuel.
Okay.
Both those items. Or there, there's a lot of sailboats that come in, all they're doing is pumping out.
Okay. And the life expectancy on the, on the equipment?
They're saying 15 to 20 is what I'm seeing in their literature that I read, which is why I'm kind of going with this one. It's a little bit higher life expectancy.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else?
No, housekeeping question. Is that two motions? Yes.
Two motions, yes.
The amendment? As necessary amendment to the, to the, um... To the budget now, or do you want to wait until it's, until it's necessary?
Necessary.
You want to, Anna, how do you want to do that? That's your department. You want us to go ahead and approve it as necessary tonight? Because you'll figure it out at some point.
Yeah. As necessary, yeah.
That's fine. Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was going to be fine.
Definitely maybe.
It's a definite maybe. I can do some pretty amazing things with funds, but...
And you have. So first part then, I guess, is I'll move that we ask staff to submit the grant application for the Michigan Boating Pump Out Program for the Marina Pump Out Replacement.
Second.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowak?
Yes.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Okay, and I move that we authorize the fund transfer, if necessary, to, to match the Marina Pumpout Grant.
Second.
Yes.
Councilmember Nowak?
Yes.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora? And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is MDOT contract for Ripley Boulevard. City engineer Steve Schultz is here.
The city has received MDOT contracts for the milling and resurfacing of Ripley Boulevard from Washington Avenue to Third Avenue. This contract provides three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in federal funding through the Small Urban Program. And the city of Alpina will provide another hundred and eighty thousand, that's a typo, it's not six hundred, it's just even hundred and eighty thousand, in matching funds from the Major Street Fund. The project is currently being bid through MDOT with a bid opening slated for this fall and work to begin in the spring of 2023. It is my recommendation as city engineer that city council approve the MDOT contract twenty-two dash five four five four by resolution committing the local match funds and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. We did receive the proposal today from MDOT, and it is scheduled for the November second, November second, November the fourth, fourth letting, November fourth letting. So that, I mean, so there'll be let and the contract will be released and everything this winter, and then with construction to begin first thing in the spring. Didn't have that information when the memo came out, so I just received a proposal today, so.
Excellent, anybody questions?
Some questions here.
So you want us to approve the MDOT contract number by resolution, and that's attached, I believe, right?
Right.
I move we adopt resolution twenty-two dash fifty-four fifty-four.
Board.
Red, it's not a resolution, we're, we're, we're just, we're adopting it by resolution.
Yes.
So the two, yeah, the two-two-five-four is MDOT's contract number.
Councilmember Nowak?
Yes.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora? Mayor Protem Johnson? And Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And our resolution was on the back of all that. So if you wanted to write that in, it's two thousand twenty-two dash sixteen was our resolution that they just. So that's that.
All right.
Got all that?
Next is the twenty-twenty-two High Efficiency Lighting Contract Modification Number Two.
All right. On March second, two thousand twenty-two, city council approved contracts with Thunder Bay Electric for the installation and replacement of lighting at both Alpina Marina and Johnson Street, and began the installation of the high efficiency ballard lighting along Washington Avenue Park Bike Path for city of Alpina Recreation Plan. At that time, we talked about bringing it back to modify the contract if, if things went well, and we were happy with the lights and everything. So part of this plan was to adopt a new standard pedestrian light, which is what we did on Johnson Street. We actually installed three instead of six that were there. I think they're pretty decent lights, and they, they, they give us a lot of light out there, so we were able to eliminate three, three, three fixtures in there. And so then what we did is we put those three fixtures and tested them out on Long Rapids Road. The old brown poles that were there, we removed some and spaced them out much the same as we did on Johnson, where there was one every other pole. And that seems to work really well, we like how that sits. And so what we're proposing for this first part portion is to, we asked Thunder Bay Electric to give us a, a price on adding more of those lights down there and removing every other light. Well, they'll remove all the lights, but on every other base, they'll install the new lights. The total price for that was forty-three thousand eighty-six dollars. There's adequate funding in the high efficiency and pedestrian lighting upgrades to fund this project. There are a couple of changes from the prior pricing. First, there's an increase in the pedestrian lights themselves. And also, the second is to address removing poles where you're not replacing other poles. But both, you know, overall, both costs are justifiable and reasonable. Secondly, we also requested and received a price to complete the installation of the new ballard lighting along the Washington Avenue Bike Path. This would be the lighting that actually continues beyond the cemetery and then back cemetery, and then connects with SciTech Park, that, that piece in there. We got a cost, provided a cost of thirty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars to install the remaining twenty-three bollards and wiring between Evergreen Cemetery and SciTech Park. As indicated in the initial award, adequate funding to complete the remaining lighting along this section of bike path was included in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year budget. Pricing is in line with what was paid previously. And so it's my recommendation as city engineer to execute the attached contract modification number two in the amount of thirty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars to complete the Washington Avenue Park Project and forty-three thousand eighty-six dollars to upgrade the Long Rapids Road pedestrian lighting in the amount, yeah, forty-three thousand eighty-six.
Catch it when you're reading it.
You do, yeah. I read it three times, too.
Any questions or?
I do have a question. I have no issue with the lights that you replaced by the college and going every other one. I do have a question on the Washington Avenue lights and the brightness of them. I've gotten a couple of comments on it, and they are rather bright, especially the ones that are closer to the road.
Okay.
Is there a solution to that?
We're investigating that a little bit. We had some initial complaints, and that was because we had some issues with the, the type of lights that went up. We changed those, they're, they're a lower K-value now, and they are dark sky, dark sky compliant. So we, we got that out of them. We're currently looking at some solutions, maybe for like a shade or a hood to go on them. They can't be turned because they're a three hundred and sixty degree, you know, throw on the light. But we are kind of looking at some things, they're not real sure what we can do, but they're looking into it, so. That's where we're at right now.
Lights that we would maybe approve to continue this, would it be as bright?
They'd be, they'd be the same lights. They'd be the same lights, and I, I think what we're running into, it's not so much the brightness, it's just the direction and how they, they appear within the park. Maybe they, people confuse them as headlights and things, but they are, they are dark sky compliant. They're, they're quite a bit, you know, lower light than they were before, so.
They are bright, especially the ones that are closer to the road when you're going through those curves. The ones that are farther away from the road seem fine. Those ones right up at the beginning of the park.
Yeah, we're, we'll continue to look at it and see if there's something we can do. I mean, right now, we'd be approving that, we'd be approving those same bollards. Now, keep in mind that these new bollards are gonna be back deep in the park or, you know, behind the cemetery and into SciTech Park, just kind of where the bike path ends. So you're not gonna be as close to the road at all in any of those situations.
But some of those brighter lights back?
We did.
Moved them.
Right, we moved them, yep.
Is it possible to take some of the lights that are bright up front, move those back and get something that's not as bright portion of the park?
Yeah, I'm not sure what else is available in those types of bollards, if there's anything lower than the three, three thousand K. We'd have to look.
Let me look into that.
Yeah, we'd have to.
They're running in some twenty-fives, but if you look at the difference between the five thousands and the three thousands, you're not seeing a whole lot of difference. There's, it's gonna come down to shielding.
Yeah, I think it's more direction than it is, yeah.
And we are looking into some shielding, having something fabricated to go on them. Tim Midrissby did talk to me about it again. We're trying to come up with a solution, but right now, the only way to shield it is to shield it away from the pathway also. So that's what we're trying to figure out is you would not be eliminating pathway at that point in time if we shielded them completely in order to avoid the lights coming in at the roadway. So you're, you'd still be walking in the dock at that point in time if we shielded them the way that I think everybody wants them to be. We're gonna have to kind of come to a compromise on it.
Because they're on the riverside of the path. Had they been on the roadside of the path?
We could have shielded them completely.
Shield them a bit better.
But we're still looking at something that kind of tips down at a forty-five is what he's trying to see if we can get for those. Something that tips at a forty-five down so that it shines at the pathway and not at the traffic.
Okay.
And how many lights? I think seventeen. I wanna say there's seventeen that, that are in effect there, so we are, it, it's not forgotten. It is something that we've discussed four or five times. It's just a matter of trying to find some kind of fabrication that works for us that satisfies all the things that we were hoping to accomplish with the lights.
Okay. That was my concern.
I guess the best part is that they'll be in the woods pretty much.
Yeah.
Pretty much in the woods, I mean.
And then we're working on a solution with the ones out in the park.
I can only get to see them if you're out there in the woods, I suppose.
And I want the pathway to be lit when it needs to be lit, but those ones up front to interfere. And I can tell you, and maybe it's me, and maybe it's just me, but I concentrate more on the lights than I do on the road. So they're distracting.
You catch that?
It's just distracting.
Guys after watching.
All right. With that said, everybody good with the proposed plan? All right, I shouldn't say, is everybody good with it? Sorry, yeah, what I meant was with someone. Like a motion.
I move we approve the contract modification.
Okay, can't just approve.
Because it's a contract modification for.
They're separate, they're separate contracts.
Oh, are they?
You wrote modification.
Okay.
Contract.
Am I right?
Okay, so it would be contract modification.
Okay, it is one contract, yeah.
It is one contract.
Okay.
Okay. That's.
Starting again. I move we approve contract modification number two, which covers the amount of thirty-nine thousand four fifty-two to complete the Washington Avenue Park Project and forty-three oh eight six to upgrade the Long Rapids pedestrian lighting. I think I got the numbers right.
I think it's, you got.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora? Mayor Protem Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
I move we adjourn.
That fast?
You got a third of my motion, don't you?